And they're covering multiple counties.
I had, I had a conversation last week with Wiesenberg.
Yeah, you told me about that.
I mean, I give him credit, he's got to learn. He's just.
It's too bad they didn't post one.
Yeah.
But I'm sure it's hard to get dates.
It's hard to get that place.
Oh, boy. Big money.
They may have something in the contract over incumbent weather, though.
Inclement weather?
They do for the annual conference.
I'll bet it was. Good morning, I'm going to call our county board meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Monty, please.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
And Commissioner Pop.
Here. Thank you, we'll move on to approval or amendments to our agenda, Monty, do you have any changes?
Mr. Chair, on your dais, you'll find two consent items, number 12 and number 13, if we may add those, please.
Commissioner Kapinski, do you want to correct 13 before we move into it, or do you want to pull it?
I can pull it.
Okay, all right, so we have 12 and 13 added to our consent agenda, anything else? Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to approve with the noted changes?
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the noted changes in regards to the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, do we need, I would like to actually approve them, though, now that they've been amended, so Commissioner Kapinski, did you have one you wanted to pull?
Yes, I would like to pull number 13.
All right.
We're not there at that point in time.
You gotta wait for the.
Yep, thank you, appreciate that.
Well, we're going to pause for open forum.
Yep, thank you, I'm sorry, I missed it. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube, please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment of public hearings, however, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate, thank you. We will move into open forum, do we have anybody that would like to speak? Okay. Mr. Wilson, you'd like to speak to the board this morning?
Yes. Well.
If you could please, Dave, if you could please come to the podium so we could hear you?
Okay.
Thank you.
What I have an issue with is I.
Dave, if I could interrupt you quickly, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm Mrs. Alfred Wilson's little boy, David. I live at 7595 Ronaby Road Northeast.
Thank you.
Which is in what was the city of Ronaby.
Thank you.
And while I was there, I recorded a plot of Wilson addition for 10 lots, seven of them had access to Highway 23. And we recorded it and went through all the proper procedures, but it was challenged, and what we're dealing with is lies. And I can't call it lies, so I'll call it false information. And it was challenged, and the false information that the, was given to the Minnesota Transportation Department was false. And they, to answer the request that came from somewhere in the administration of the Benton County, that it was a false, illegal plot, and it would never be developed. Well, the Department of Transportation gave the Attorney General's Office $750,000 to fight the case. This is a transcript of the, it was a week-long trial over in St. Cloud, and at the end of the trial, Judge Hoffman said that wasn't illegal, it was a legal plot. And Wilson addition, which had Grace Avenue to it, which was Railroad Avenue or 143rd Street Northeast, went across Highway 23. It was dissected in about 1953 when the men, when the highway went from downtown Ronaby out by the railroad tracks. And so therefore, with that information, it has been denied by the administration here in, in the Benton County somewhere. And the way I look at it as a farmer out in the field, there's a rat in a woodpile someplace. But anyway, they removed that access to lot number four, which I sold through DevCon Construction under the pretense that it was a legal plot, and they had legal access. And I read in the paper and I had it to bring in, and me, I got excited and forgot it, or mislaid it. But the editorial in the St. Cloud paper was, "Don't be afraid to speak the truth, it's the lies that cause the problems." And this is where that false information has been a great detriment to the landowners, which was sold to DevCon Construction. And they have had direct access to where now they have to go through a snake trail off of other people's property to get to Highway, County Road Number Six. And to me, it is pure discrimination for that, for the DevCon Construction. And I have had a number of incidents where I've been harassed and discriminated against. I'll cut it down to make a short statement. And I have gone through a lot of different departments, so I thought I would bring it before you folks, to put it on record, that I think it's an issue would be done, taken under advisement. And I'd appreciate either a report from you, or to come back next meeting and see what the report would be. Final, final statement.
Okay, thank you, Dave, first, I've heard of it, I'm not sure about the rest of it.
Oh, there's a problem here, I can't hear.
Okay, so we will, we took your statement, Dave, and we'll get a response back to you. We need to reach out to staff and find out the other half of the story, so.
I, I must say, do what?
We're going to reach out to staff and find out the other half of the story.
I kind of chuckle at that because one time a police officer was out there and I said I, there's two sides to a sheet of paper, and he testified in court, and he didn't think I knew there was two sides to a sheet of paper, and the judge shook his head and said, "Carry on," thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, was there anyone else in public forum, open forum?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you, our open forum is closed. Members, we'll move on to our consent agenda, items one through 13 have been presented.
Mr. Chair, I'll pull, I would like to pull number 13 for clarification.
Okay, motion to pull 13. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, we'll pull 13 then, what are your wishes with one through 12?
Motion to approve one through 12.
Second.
And a second, any other discussion on one through 12, hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, Commissioner Kapinski, item 15 on the consent agenda.
Thank you for bringing this up to me, Mr. Chair, Donald Manaya should be Donald Manaya Jr. on there, that would be the only change.
Thank you, sir, yep.
And with that notation, I would move approval of item number 13.
Second, motion, a second, to approve item 13 as amendment to state Donald Jr. Any other discussion, hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Move on to Roxanne, consideration of an agreement with the Department of Ag to become an authorized lender of the Ag BMP loan program funds.
All right, before you, you have the, the agreement with the Department of Ag become an authorized lender with the state. This does not mean that we will automatically have monies, it does not commit you to anything, it just says that we will become an authorized lender. The attorney's office has reviewed this and has provided their concerns. If there's any questions, Michelle is on the line, if you have any questions on that, otherwise, this will be the first step in providing the opportunity for Eagleview Commons to apply for funding.
All right, members, any questions for staff, Commissioner Pop?
So Roxanne, under, I've used the Ag BMP loan, and normally that's associated with a bank.
Yep.
So are they going to go to a bank and then?
We are the bank.
We are the bank.
We are becoming the lender. So we're not the only county, there's, there's many counties that are authorized lenders. In this situation, counties become lenders in the instance where a bank is not necessarily the financial institution that is, is capable of providing authorization for a loan. So a, a bank may not be able to provide a loan for 40 individuals at once.
So one more question.
Or maybe the, the amount is too much.
One more question I have is, you know, this is an assessment against several people in that addition. Even when you have an individual that goes to the bank, there's incidents where they either terminate their farming practice or do something like that, and the bank actually ends up holding, you know, I mean, there could be a portion of this that we'd end up holding if.
Well, I would assume the assessment will continue with the property regardless of who the property owner is.
Yeah, that's true.
Right?
Well, so we have the ability, if the property sells, we can collect all of it.
Oh, okay.
At that point of sale.
Let's get clarification, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, get clarification.
She did clarify that, that if the property sells, we could.
Yep.
Get paid at once.
Right, yep.
So it's like a lien.
So we have that ability to special assess the lending institutions, like the banks.
They, they can.
No, right.
So say property B sells and we, they could transfer it over, or could they?
We can allow that if we want to.
At that point, I would be more in favor of they pay off their portion of that. Just, I, I think it's risky going down that.
And so that's the way we draft the lien documents and the, and the applications, if I'm not wrong, Michelle. Correct.
Michelle, is that something that the seller or buyer could do in their purchase agreement, whether or not that's going to be paid? I, I mean, what I'm getting at is I would hate to, if somebody wants to sell their property, it would be a detriment to them because of the assessment that they can't sell it, because somebody doesn't want to pick up the assessment, if that makes sense.
Right, I mean, technically, it'll depend on our lien agreements, we will be bringing those forward to you to kind of go through, if you have those concerns, we can certainly draft language in the agreement, the lien agreements with the individual owners to address that.
And I, and I can, I can understand your concern, Commissioner, I just, I think that regardless, it's going to stay on the assessment with the property, I, I don't know that it's a high risk.
Well, I, I think it could be challenged because if, you know, there's 40, roughly 40 lots in there, right? So if one house goes into foreclosure and the bank has to, to sell it out, I think there could be a problem on when they sell it and then the, the party willing to buy, it's going to say, "I don't want that assessment, I didn't agree to that assessment." So I think we need to make sure we're covered, yeah.
Sounds like something, like you said, Michelle, we could talk about in our lien agreement discussion.
Correct.
But I would make this.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I would make this really ironclad so that, you know, the county does, I don't know what each lot assessment's going to be, but they don't get hung for 5,000 bucks or something.
I think your initial estimate was 11 something, if I remember right.
Yeah, and we'll get into that.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, so Michelle, under your comments, number five, section 10, state wants the county to agree to pay legal fees, fees, if the state has to collect payments?
Right, if the county is in good, it's obligation, the state wants us to pay their attorney's fees to collect. So I assume that we will be good on our obligation at the county level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's dealing with the individual landowners, that's the county going or fulfilling their obligations.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners, otherwise we'll entertain a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to review and authorize the chair to sign the lender agreement via DocuSign with the Department of Agriculture in order to become an authorized lender of Ag BMP loan program funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to that effect, any other discussion on this item? Any other discussion, hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, thank you, Roxanne, next.
Commissioner Johnson, just to let you know, you'll receive an email from me with that document that needs to be DocuSign.
Perfect, thank you, move on to next discussion on the application fee for Ag BMP SSTs loan application.
Okay, because this is a county application, and this will be each individual property owner, we need to discuss an application fee. That does need to be set as a county fee, so an amendment to our county fee schedule, and that is a public hearing process. Most of the other counties have set a fee of $100, and I've outlined in the staff report everything that will be involved in that process, so it is quite extensive. The recording of all, of the application and the lien document are, is, is a recording fee, it's a straight $46 for each of those. But for that application and the processing, it's $100 that other counties are charging. However, there's a little bit more of a simplified process, they're doing a application for an individual septic, it's a little bit cleaner, a little bit easier. So I wanted to get this out there, if we want to have a committee of the whole on this, we certainly can, I'm just trying to move this along, move it forward, so that we can get this whole program hopefully in place, and that they can start getting their septic installed before, you know, early summer, hopefully. So at least $100 is what I'm, I'm thinking.
Members?
I guess I'm okay with that as long as she's, Roxanne's comfortable with the fee.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it covers all of our stuff.
Yeah.
You know, because this is not on us, this is all on the.
With that, I'll move that we accept the $100 fee.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, to accept that, the recommended application fee for the Ag BMP SSTs loan application, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried.
And we'll bring it forward as, at a public hearing.
On, it looks like the 21st?
That's, yep, that's the plan, yep.
All right. Next, discussion on Ag BMP SSTs loan terms for Eagleview Commons, establish a date and time for county board of appeal and equalization, excuse me, I got into the next one, discussion on Ag BMP SSTs loan terms for Eagleview Commons.
And again, this is something that we certainly can consider at a committee of the whole level, however, I feel like we've had quite a bit of discussion on this. The state statute does allow for the board to set the terms at a length not to exceed 10 years, or an interest rate of 3% per year on the loans to these individuals. I think that 10, 10 years at 3% interest rate is probably appropriate for this loan. We're looking at 444,000 as the estimated loan amount for this project, and that comes to $11,385 per property owner. So it is a significant amount, and I don't think that we would want to go at anything less than 10 years for that amount. And it would start next year, would, assuming that the project is completed this year, the assessment would begin next year.
Roxanne, I assume that the landowner can pay it all off upfront if she's.
They would be allowed to pay it upfront if they wanted to, pay it off quicker if they wanted to.
Okay.
And so we would bring forward a resolution to set these terms, I just wanted to make sure that this was, that the board was comfortable with the loan terms.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinon?
Yeah, we've had lengthy discussion about this in college already before. The question I have, though, Michelle, is you're saying that if they get it done, you know, next year, 2024, in the middle of that year, or, no, I'm sorry, 23, this June, right? This coming June, and then the assessment starts when the project is done, so it'll start in 2024?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted clarification.
Mr. Chair, what, what is a life expectancy of this silver project, or, I mean, is it 20 years, is it 25?
That I don't have an answer to. If, if it's well maintained?
Yeah.
Probably a little bit longer.
Okay. And Roxanne, talking about the assessment date, to follow up on Commissioner Heinon's question, and maybe this is a question for Brian, I don't know, but is there a specific, a specific date this year that it would have to be completed to be on next year's assessment?
We would need to have all of the project costs and the special assessment process completed by, I believe it's November 1, is when we would need everything to the auditor treasurer's office.
To, to be able to get on the 24?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion on this? For this resolution?
I still want, Mr. Chair, that we accept the terms of the agreement for the Ag BMP SSTs loan application.
For Eagleview Commons, all right, I'll second that, any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. All right, move on to next, establish a date and time for county board of appeal and equalization, or special board of appeal and equalization for the 23 assessment year, Roxanne.
Okay, much like every other year, we need to set a county board of appeal and equalization, or the special board of appeal and equalization. Typical has been the special board of appeal and equalization, and we're looking at June 11, 2023, which is a Monday, standard date and time of that Monday. We're looking at 7:00 PM, or it's not to end prior to 7:00 PM, but it's been standard that first Monday, or second Monday in June. And then to appoint the members that are listed on the second page there, so we've got Rob Jacobs, Joe Kapinski, Suzanne Barcalow, Jason Tangen, and Bill Eichler as the members, and to set a per diem of $150 for serving on the special board.
Okay, members, any questions?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, it's June 12.
June 12.
That Monday?
Yes.
What did I keep saying?
11.
11.
That's fine.
All right, any other questions?
The AMC district meeting is on the 12th.
That's fine, this is going to be a special board.
Yeah, it won't be there. We don't have to be there.
Okay.
This is not for us.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pop?
Is that $150 for the one meeting, say there has to be more than one, or if they, I mean, we've never had more than one, but depending on, you know, what we've heard from townships and that with the high, high increase in values? And their homework that they may have to do?
Um, it, it's been 150 just for serving on there, so it's been a flat rate, we didn't have additional last year, so I don't suspect that it'll be any different this year.
And I would assume that's plus mileage also? The rest of our boards and commissions do that? Or would you be okay with that, or what's your thoughts?
Mr. Chair, Monty.
Or is this going to be held, right here?
Right here.
Held here, yep.
Question, have we ever needed to have more than one?
No, whether or not we also pay mileage to this, because it doesn't talk about that here. I would assume we would and should, that's what, that's how we handle the rest of them.
Like park commission, we definitely pay mileage for those folks.
Yeah.
About planning commission?
Yeah.
So I would think that's appropriate, that they would receive mileage reimbursement.
Okay.
So maybe you want to include that in your motion, so it's clear.
To amend it.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All right, I'm going to move to establish a special board of appeal and equalization for June 12, 2023, from 6:30 to 7:30, meetings not to end prior to 7:00 PM. This would also establish the appointment of the members that are included and listed here, and also would be set the per diem at $150 plus mileage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Any other discussion, hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. And finally, Roxanne, land services update.
Okay, all right, I'll make this quick, but I have not had an opportunity to bring to you the 2022 year-end report. In your packets, you should have our permitting numbers. As you can see, our house permits were actually up just slightly in 2022, we are at 48 single-family homes compared to 45 in 2021. The permit value was up significantly at 391,000 versus 304,000 in 2021. More of the graphs, we've got building permit value by year, that has increased, especially for, it looks like our ag buildings were up significantly for the value of those. And I took out the single-family home permits because I think that skews those numbers significantly. So this is just building permit value by year. The next one is general building permit numbers, and that was 643 in 2022 versus 289 in 21. And that, that's, that's due to the storm that went through, we saw a lot of roofing and siding, I mean, it was nonstop for a long time there. And then you just see the general fluctuation of permit numbers from 2018 to 2022 for our houses, accessory structures, additions, ag buildings, UPS, variances, and administrative subdivisions. And everything's, you know, relatively follows a, a pretty, I mean, there's, there's an obvious flow to all of those. One of the things that I want to bring up is we will have our Beacon flight this spring, so that imagery will be updated. We're thinking end of March, sometime in April is when they'll start doing that imagery, so hopefully this year, that foliage will be off, will not be established yet, so we'll have a little bit clearer picture with all of, all of that greenery on the trees. And then sometime early summer, that'll be uploaded onto Beacon for everybody to see.
Great.
Recorder's office is the next page. Per Minnesota statute 357.182 subdivision 6, I'm filing a compliance report with you as part of the recorder's budget process. We were 100% compliant in 2022 while recording 6,687 documents, is a decrease by about 2,500 documents for, from 2021. And I, I can't tell you why we were lower, but we're, our numbers are similar to 2019 in 2022. Unsure of why that is, I, I'm thinking there may have been a lot less people refinancing at that time, they did it, a lot of people were refinancing in, in '21 versus '22, and so you saw a lot less people doing that. Cheryl does a great job of providing us with all of the numbers on the next page with, on that brightly colored document, you can see all of our e-recorded versus paper documents, the type of documents, and the amounts collected. And then the final page is just our recording fees collected. And then I, Brian could give you a quick update, I think he was at the township meeting. I think he was at the township meeting. I was at Board of Adjustments training till nine o'clock that night, so. But I think Brian probably gave you guys mostly a pretty good update, but if he will give you a quick run-through of what we're looking at for tax and CAMA.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Yeah, I went through the, at the township presentation, I'll kind of briefly go over it. Our local board schedule and county board, a special board is now set. A quick overview of our assessment summary. We did have, for residential properties, there was 397 residential sales included in this year's study. Our overall median ratio is 83.53. We are looking at an average county-wide increase on residential properties around 15%. Agricultural rural vacant land, over 34 and 1/2 acres, we were at 86.32% median ratio. And our rural vacant under 34 and 1/2, we were at 86.66. We're looking at about a 10% increase in all of our agricultural and rural vacant land countywide. Commercial industrial multifamily and apartments, our median ratio was 81.03. And industrial properties with very limited sales, we had a county-wide median ratio of 59.79. Apartments, buildings, we had a median ratio of 75.78. And so our commercial industrial multifamily are going to range from 10 to 30% increases in valuation as well. Continue to be strong sales, there's a limited supply right now. Obviously, interest rates have increased, but if you remember, our sales ratio period ends September 30, so October of 2021 through September of 2022. So we'll keep an eye on it for next year, obviously. Valuations are due to our outsourcer by March 1st, so the office is really trying to get our finalized values for 23 assessment for taxes payable 24 done here in the next week to get it to the outsourcer. Statements should be going out with the tax statements on March 22nd. And our first local board meeting is April 5th. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Brian, just a couple of questions, maybe for the record, if you could just touch base quickly on the median ratio. And then also, and then also where you like to be at, I know you have a range.
Yep.
At what your goal is to be at for that.
Yeah, so what we do is we take all of the good open market sales. So the state has a list of rejected sales. So let's say that you sold a property to a relative, that's an automatic reject. So we want to look at open market sales, the buyer and seller are both, you know, in their own best interests, you know, seller trying to maximize profit, buyer trying to get the best price. We look at open market sales and we array them. What was the, what was our assessed value in comparison to what it sold for? So we take our value divided by what it sold for, and that's your median or your ratio. Then we take all of those sales, we array them high to low, low to high, and look at the middle. The median ratio has to be between 90 and 105% by state statute. We try to shoot for 95%. Ultimately, we want to be at 100%. If every sale was at 100%, you know, we'd be perfect. This year, we're looking at 95% as our median ratio, because we know that we don't want to overshoot it because it does take a year, you know, next year, if it does start coming down or stabilizing, then we'd be dropping values at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinen.
So Brian, so this was market-driven with our evaluations being down, being so low? So that our evaluations, you know, at, you know, some of them are at 86%?
Correct.
84%? Was that market-driven because of higher costs of buying the property?
Yeah, I mean, so we follow the market. We always follow the market.
Yeah.
And let the market tell us what's going on. So as we, as we set our evaluations for the 22 assessment, that market was still increasing.
It was.
So basically, the market continued to go up, and now, you know, a year later, we're raising values to get back to that median ratio that we need to be for the next year. And again, if it continues to go up, or if it flattens out or goes down, we'll just follow that market, whatever happens.
And that's the point I wanted to be made, this was market-driven.
Yeah.
You know, this was not us.
Yeah, we don't, we don't set the market, we follow the market.
Correct.
And Brian, just for my own education, so you shoot for that 95% to allow that little bit beyond that, why would anybody go to 105? I mean, if that was.
Because there's not, with, with every sale, we don't know exactly what properties are going to sell for. Some people fall in love with a certain aspect of a property and will pay more than what the rest of the market would pay. So when our median ratio, when our median ratio is at 95%, we're going to have some that are 110, 115, 100, we're going to have some at 80% that sell less than the market.
Sure.
And so that gives, you know, everybody gets the opportunity to, you know, to give us a call, and if they're one of those houses that's at 125%, they certainly can give us a call and we can go walk through it and see if there was a reason that, is there something that we have incorrect on the property? Or maybe they, maybe they got a good price on the property.
Well, and I know you mentioned at the township meeting to make, you know, encourage people to call in with that information, right? Because it helps you as to establish.
Absolutely. So we, we call on every, on every open market sale, and actually, we call on all the sales, just trying to get as much data as we can. And so, for instance, if somebody bought an agricultural property and there was personal property, included a machinery, a tractor, an irrigator, that was part of that sale price, we want to know that because that personal property's then taken off the purchase price to get down to the actual, what did the land and building sell for?
Right, great, Commissioner Bob.
One thing that I heard over the course of the years was when agricultural land brings this, you know, 150% of what it's actually worth. One farmer told me, I questioned, why are you paying that kind of money? He said, because the last time I checked with God, he wasn't making any more.
Yep, we're hearing that as well.
No more dirt being made, that's right.
All right, Brian, thank you.
And then I want to give you just a quick update. February 1, both the Auditor Treasurer and the Assessor's Office had a demo with Tyler for CAMA and Tax, so we did go through that, the presentation. There's been several emails back and forth with just questions from both myself and from the Auditor Treasurer's Office. I do have a meeting, for MCCC has a Tyler user group meeting next Monday that I'm going to be planning on attending, just to try to get some more information from other people that are using Tyler. And then hopefully, we'll get some finalized pricing and stuff, and hopefully get it to the Committee of the Whole sooner than later.
And Brian, do we have a, like a drop-dead date on this?
Avenue, MCCC, I have an email out, and hopefully next week I'll hear what their extension is looking like. There was talk of 18 to 24-month extensions, but I haven't heard what that has been yet. So Avenue, December of 2023 of this year was when they were going to be no longer supporting our system. So 18 to 24-month puts us out till mid-2025. And I know that there's, there has been some, you know, we talked about, you know, the timeline of when it would work for, you know, for Tyler, if that was the way we went. You know, they're looking at quarter 2 of '24. I know the Auditor Treasurer's Office is not, '24 is not a great year, obviously, with the big election coming up. So, you know, is '25 a possibility for quarter 2 of '25? You know, that to be determined, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinsky.
Yeah, that's what I was going to bring up, is I know that the Auditor Treasurer's Office definitely does not want to look at '24 for implementing, especially with the major election year.
And you mentioned quarter 2 and '25, why would we wait till then?
Well, I think it was just the elections done and then starting, I think quarter 2 is usually the best time because your valuations are just finishing up in April, so that's kind of a natural flow.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, so we've been working on this ever since I've been on this board, you know? So I hope we can come to some conclusion.
Some agreement, pretty soon.
Yeah, because, you know, and like I said, if the Avenue extension's 18 months, then our hand may be pressed a little bit to get it done by the end of '24.
Anything else?
Nope, just thanks to Roxanne.
Yep, thank you, Roxanne and Brian, appreciate it.
For the job they do in that office.
Yep.
All right, we're going to turn our board meeting over to the Human Services Board Chair, Steve Heinen.
Well, we'll call over the Human Services Board. Approve or amend the agenda. Bob, you got anything to add to the agenda?
No changes.
Move approval of the agenda?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent, agenda item 1 and 2, what would you like to do with that?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, regular agenda. Bob, request to attend the NACCHO Emergency Preparedness Summit.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
I believe you were all given this form as well, and it was a pretty good summary of what all they're going to be covering. And I think to really boil it down, it's an opportunity for staff around the country to be able to analyze what happened, what are we going to do, and what can we prepare for in the future and so forth. It's mainly for emergency preparedness. And I think Troy had written something to say that his person wouldn't be able to come along on this, but I think the idea is still to have our person be able to bring the information back and share it with his department. So I would ask that the board approve this.
So Bob.
Any questions?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
Is it fair to say that this request shows two employees, so fair to say that it would be cut in half? There's only one going?
Yes, and it is covered by a grant.
Grant money, okay, thank you.
Someday that grant money's going to dry up, but I.
Any other questions for Bob? I think in the motion, we should let that be known, that it's only for one individual.
One individual.
Right.
Did you have anything else to say on it, Troy?
I'll just add that Kristen is, wanted to go to it, but it just wasn't going to work out with the plan she has right now and the work that she has before her.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator to be able to attend the NACCHO Out-of-State Emergency Preparedness Summit. And again, that is for one person, which will be funded by a grant.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Bob. Do you have anything else in front of us?
I do not, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're adjourned at 9:38. I'll turn it over to the regular board chair now, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Heinen. Okay, Monty, you're up, first item, consider the non-union employee general wage adjustment.
Back in December, Mr. Chair, the county board approved the general wage adjustment for non-union employees at 2.5%. Since then, the negotiating committee has reached an agreement with four of our eight bargaining units for a, actually, a 3% general wage adjustment effective January 1, 2023. So to provide the same treatment and conditions for our non-union employees, I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that the board revise the non-union general wage adjustment from 2.5% to instead the 3% also effective January 1 of 2023.
Okay, members, any questions for Monty?
No, I, Mr. Chair, I go, I move that we approve a 3% wage adjustment from 2.5 because of where our labor negotiations have went.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Move on to consider revisions of the county contribution to non-employee health insurance, Monty.
Well, Mr. Chair, the bargaining committee has also reached a different health insurance arrangement with four of our eight bargaining units. And that arrangement is portrayed on the back of this agenda item. The, the health insurance arrangement the board adopted back in December for, excuse me, it was before that, probably more like about October, that had the employee and the county sharing the increase in the premium by 50/50, a 50/50 split. As we got into negotiations, though, the, again, the negotiating committee made a different proposal. And instead, the proposal was that the county would pay 80% of the single premium and 75% of the family premium. That proposal was accepted by our four bargaining unit. You've had those contracts on your agenda. So I think to treat our non-union employees similarly, I would recommend that we also adopt the same cost-sharing arrangement for non-union folks again, where the county would pay 80% of the single premium and 75% of the family premium. And then, and again, on this, the, on the back, you'll see the original versus the revised in terms of county contribution, employee contribution.
All right, any questions for Monty? Commissioner Sloman.
This is going to be for all, all areas and the non.
So this, the action for you today would be applicable to all non-union employees, right? So.
Everyone's.
The, the, up to this point, you've had four union contracts on your agenda, and that provided the 80/75 split. And this would apply to our non-union folks. So about 20% of our county employees are non-union, so that's who this would apply to today.
Any other questions for Monty? If not, is there a motion?
If that, I'll make a motion to approve the revised 20,000, 2023 county contributions to non-union employee health insurance reflecting the county funding 80% for the single plan premium and 75% for the family plan premium, effective January 1, 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, my motion is second. Again, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I wanted to make a few comments about how this would be financed. As we've discussed with our bargaining committee, going to the 3% general wage adjustment in this different health insurance arrangement does produce a cost which wasn't budgeted for in 2023. If it's implemented countywide, the extra cost is about 212,000. And a strategy that we discussed at our bargaining committee was actually to hold some positions vacant to help pay for this. So I think that's important, of course, to have a good, solid budget fundamentals. And, and I think, again, our bargaining committee thought that was appropriate strategy. So at this point, actually, we are holding three positions vacant that helps cover this additional cost. One is our safety position here in administrator's office. A second is the staff appraiser position that was added to land services. And a third is a social worker position in human services. Between those three, that more or less covers this unbudgeted cost. So it somewhat stands to reason that those positions will remain vacant for the foreseeable future and probably into the 2024 budget process as the board discusses, you know, what is the best long-term strategy to cover these additional costs?
Thank you, Monty.
Yep.
All right, move into considering a resolution to vacate County Road Rightof Way in connection with the City of Foley odor control facility project.
Sure, okay. Let me, if I may, just put up the, the map. Haven't used this in a while. So this is the famous triangle property at adjacent County Road 50. And as you may recall, there's really two processes at work here. One is to vacate the easement portions, which is, you see the shaded areas, and then the second is the, the fee title area, which will, the board will address at a public hearing in March. So again, just focusing on today, you see actually a couple of shaded areas. There's a darker shaded area, a lighter shaded area. As I understand, as Michelle, our assistant county attorney, and our surveyor, Jay Whitstock, were examining ownership records, et cetera, they discovered that in addition to being the dark shaded area, there was also a smaller sliver, and I believe the term that they use is slope easement. It was discovered that that was also an easement held by the county, which also must be vacated. So this would then clear the path then for the city to negotiate the potential acquisition of property from the underlying fee title owners for their odor control facility. So that the resolution in front of you today would vacate both areas, the darker shaded area and then the lighter shaded area, the so-called slope easement. So that's, that's one aspect of the resolution. And a second aspect is authorizing the board chair to execute a quitclaim deed to essentially release these two easements. So as I understand, our process is once, if you, if you approve this today, then we serve notice by civil process to the adjacent property owners of this action. We post the, we post the resolution for 10 days. And more or less, once the quitclaim deed then is recorded with the Recorder's Office, more or less, that completes then this part of this process, the so-called vacation of these two easements. And then, again, the, the fee title portion will be wrapped up then about mid-March. And I believe Michelle is with us online, if you all have any questions.
Michelle, if I could, just looking at this, it looks like the additional slope easement's about seven feet. Is that correct, what I'm seeing here?
Correct, so it's 40 feet from centerline, and the right of way is 33 feet, and that was what was encompassed in the original exhibit. And then we had to also vacate that additional seven feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pinsky.
I'll be glad when this is all done, because there's a lot of process for something that is legitimately a no-brainer. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to vacate. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to vacate County Road 50 right of way as described in the resolution.
All right, I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hannon.
So with that, with that resolution, does that include that seven foot then?
That does include the seven foot.
Yes, it does. Yep.
Okay, I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Thanks.
Then we'll, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for more discussion.
After that, we got to do the quitclaim, I believe. Or can we add that to this?
Michelle, do you need the quitclaim included?
The resolution authorizes the chair to execute the quitclaim, so I do not believe a separate mission in the motion is necessary.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you. Move on to consider a grant agreement with Benton Communications to provide American Rescue Plan Act funds for the extension of broadband service to unserved and underserved areas of Benton County.
Mr. Chair, I think we can accurately describe today as a really big day.
Big day.
I think this is a really important step for our county, our county board, and our residents of our county. As you may, just a little bit of quick history, is we engaged a consultant to assist us with a study of our county and determine the extent of broadband coverage in our county. We also, within, the next step was to put out an RFI, seeking proposals from broadband providers on how they might serve areas of our county, and one of the firms that responded was Benton Communications. So more or less, Mr. Chair, the proposal and this agreement reflects extending broadband service to areas that lie north of Highway 23. I know there are a few small exceptions where there were some areas that Benton Communications said it was really not feasible or cost-effective for them to access, and hopefully, that's something we can address as time goes by. I recall it was just a few, just a small handful, and if I recall correctly, I believe they were on the west side of Highway 10, and that was going to be one of the big challenges, was reaching them. But this covers a substantial number of addresses, I believe, as I say in my agenda item, four-hundred-and-eighty-three addresses to the north of Highway 23. This, excuse me, this contract commits $1,060,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds that helps provide the local match for a border-to-border grant that Benton Communications was awarded. And I certainly invite Commissioner Johnson and Kapinski, if you want to add any comments as well.
Mr. Chair, this has been a long process, and I thank the whole committee for this. This has been, and the board for committing funds from the ARPA on this. As a result of those, I think it was like four or five houses, I believe those right across from almost like the Little Rock Lake area. But I have, we had a fire in the fall out there, and I seen a utility company putting fiber in out there, I think it was for Charter at that point. So we might want to take a look at that, because they might now be served, yeah. But with, without that, we had talked about doing some creative DISH-type Hughes satellite or something like that for those individuals. So we got to, we got to still come to an agreement on that, but we're looking forward to this first step here, and with that, I'll make a motion to grant the agreement with Benton Cooperative Telephone Company doing business as Benton Communications for $1,060,008 in the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the extension of fiber broadband services to underserved, to unserved and underserved areas of Benton County.
And I'll second that. Any other discussion? I would like to just kind of go off what Commissioner Kapinski said. First of all, thank you to the board. It makes our job and as a committee a lot easier to know that we have some backing from the other three of you, so I really appreciate that. And again, I want to recognize Amanda, I see she's online with us, and Commissioner Kapinski on their leadership on this. It got us to where we're at today. Monty, too. He's done a lot of the background work.
I'm, question may come about, well, when's the fiber going to start going around? And I'm sure everyone is very eager. I understand that some of the smaller aspects of this project will occur yet this year, but then the rest, I believe the larger, this agenda describes three areas, essentially two small ones and then one much larger one. I understand they may do some work on the two smaller ones yet this year, and then the largest area would be accomplished in a 24, but hopefully, by end of 24, the folks who live in that area will then have access to high-speed fiber broadband.
And I'd also like to clarify, too, if you do look at the maps, obviously, the majority of this is north of 23 because of how they'll do their install. Obviously, it comes into south of 23 a little bit. Obviously, they're not just going to stop at the highway. But their maps outline that, so. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, one other thing, we had some other major partners in this with the townships. They really came together, and as Commissioner Johnson said at our township meeting, we had the opportunity to go meet with every township, and even whether they were getting the fiber already served, we met with every one to make sure that we got our point across, we got to hear from them if they were already served, how they got it done. So it was, this has been a long process, been fun, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do want to thank you and Commissioner Kapinski following up on all of this. I know this was a high priority even before you guys joined this board, was to get, you know, fiber everywhere. So thanks for taking the initiative to move this forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you. Move on to consider a resolution supporting Benton Communications' application for state border-to-border broadband grant and pledging county ARPA funds as a portion of the local match. Monty.
I'm going to jump back to the map here, if I may, and this is, it's in your packet as well. And I encourage Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Kapinski to jump in on this story. So of course, you know, we just more or less wrapped up the north part of the county, and this is all about the southern part, that area lying to the south of Highway 23. Let's see here, zoom out just a little bit. There we go, let me zoom out. So your broadband committee can continue discussions with providers on options to serve this area of our county and admittedly, some of the areas with the worst broadband service, and I think that was very important to really focus on this area and see what we could to bring broadband service to this part of the county. Benton Communications made a proposal, and it's in combination with seeking border-to-border funds at a 35% grant level, and as I mentioned, we had some discussions with other providers, and we were happy to see that basically they were apples and apples proposals, and that was really important. In other words, that, you know, we were agreeing to pledge about $2 million. We wanted the grants to have more or less the same equal chance of success in getting border-to-border. In other words, one couldn't have been, okay, it wants a 50% grant, but another wants a 35. The way the grants are scored, that 50% would have scored much worse. So we wanted them to be on the same level, and that's what I, that's what we were able to achieve, and that was really important. And I think also Benton Communications has a good track record of being successful in getting border-to-border. So, and I should just say, too, is they've been a great partner with us in the discussions about the north part, and I think our committee felt very comfortable with them as a partner for the southern part. And I think, oh, so why is this in front of you today? Was we understand the next deadline for applying for border-to-border is March 2nd, so Benton Communications needed your resolution today to include that in their application packet for the March 2nd deadline. And I'll just invite you all, if anyone wants to comment.
Mr. Chair, this is going to, this was a tough one for the committee, because up until about a month ago, we didn't have a dance partner for this one, and it was, it was difficult. We're looking at each other, basically begging providers to come to the table, and literally all of them came to the table. We went from nothing to two to three providers that wanted to help Benton County out on this. So that was, that was a great outcome from where we were staring end of the year, beginning of this year. So it definitely is, we'll say, a privilege to put this to bed, and, you know, with the $2 million, I know we kind of put an earmark of 3.5. This would, this would be just over $3 million.
Right.
So under budget on this. There's a lot of other things that come into play later on and stuff with the ones that we still got to work on for the, by the Little Rock Lake area, stuff like that. But we're looking good on our numbers, we're looking good on our partners, and it's definitely a, it's fun to sit up here and bring this to you guys.
Thank you. If I could just comment, too, and maybe Commissioner Kapinski, correct me if I'm wrong, but the areas that are not identified in that map, DeWellam, that kind of little sliver to the west, I believe is covered by Arbig already today.
Yep.
Then, in the bottom southeast corner, Glendorado is also covered, and I believe that's by Windstream or somebody else, but they already have fiber there. If you noticed at our fall meeting, they had a good internet connection there already. So that's why you're not seeing, you know, exact county lines outlined there, that those areas are covered up to the northeast, they're Benton Communications already in that area, too, so.
Yeah. Commissioner Kapinski.
I'm glad you brought that up. What we got to be careful about is making sure, because these are all according to the broadband map that the state and federal government have, so if all of a sudden, somebody's outside that line and doesn't have service, we can, we can actually go back and get them the service. We just got to prove it to the, to the, to the federal government and everything that, hey, that person is unserved at this point. So that'll come later on after these projects get going.
And Benton's certainly aware of that.
Yep.
Willing to deal with that at the.
Correct.
Yeah, and unlike our, the areas to nowhere, I don't have a timeline for when this might occur. Of course, several things need to happen first, and then, of course, is get the broadband grant, the B2B grant.
Right.
So I would imagine it wouldn't occur until 24 at least.
I thought we were talking 25 on that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
So what is it like, for something like this, what is the total cost? How much does the grant provide?
They're still working on that right now.
I don't know that we have the total project cost yet.
We got our cap put in here, or what we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we do not have a total, I know that Benton Communications needed to engage an independent engineering firm to do a study for them, and I don't believe that's quite complete. I haven't heard from them, yeah.
And as Commissioner Kapinski said, that doesn't change, our $2 million's fixed. Right. So.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
China.
I, what I really want to say is I think it was very important that we got Benton Communications on board, because this is Benton County. Okay? To me, it was very important that they're serving all of Benton County. I think that was a great, great choice in Communications.
We pretty much begged.
Yeah.
So.
And it's funny, like you said, they all showed up the same week, so.
Yeah.
Anyways.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution supporting Benton Communications' application for state border-to-border broadband funding and committing $2 million of the county's American Rescue Plan Act funding, too.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Get it done.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Monty.
Sure.
Mark, consider a MINDOT detour agreement when you're ready. Thank you.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
So today, we got before you the MINDOT detour agreement, and previous times, I've shared a few updates. So MINDOT this summer of 2023, and then 2024 is planning on reconstructing US Highway 10, mainly the bridge there, or I should say, Trunk Highway 10 and Trunk Highway 23, that extends each direction on 23 all the ways, and then a little bit up on Trunk Highway 10. They had proposed to us, I think Chris was a part of conversations early on, of using one, a couple of our roads for their detour route. This wouldn't be for a full closure of either Trunk Highway 23 nor US, or Trunk Highway 10. What it would be is, the detour route would be essentially northbound traffic, so the leg, when you're taking Highway 23 to the west, and you want to head north on US Highway 10, when they have to close that leg, that's one of their phases, and the second phase would be to enter Highway 23 from 10 and go eastbound. So that's the proposal that they would like to use. Mayhew Lake Road, Cassaw 1, from 23, all the way up to Cassaw 3, Golden Spike Road, and then it would detour on Cassaw 3 to Trunk Highway 10, and vice versa. So they have in your packet today is the detour agreement, and it has a number of different things. So as part of that, right now, preliminary, they're, they would say that the cost, they would reimburse the county, would be $6,514.57, but that will be the actual payment based upon the actual days that that detour route is in place.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, it just, it's frustrating what we're dealing with on County Road 1 right now, right by the school, and I know they got to do this, it's been in plans a long time, but man, this is a dangerous scenario. We just had another accident out there yesterday, correct? Sheriff?
You know, I have been out just late this morning.
So, yeah, we had, we had an accident out in that area last, yesterday evening, so.
Okay.
It's just going to put more, more issues and more problems on our intersections going through that whole area.
Will this detour actually go past the high school now? Yeah.
Yeah, to County 3.
County 3?
It would not go past.
It'll go to County 3.
Yeah. That's. The actual signed detour would end, the north end would be the Cassaw 3, Golden Spike and Mayhew Lake Road intersection, that roundabout that's currently there.
But we also, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we also know that they're also going to go all the way to 29.
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to bypass those.
Because otherwise, I got to go through, what, three roundabouts?
Three roundabouts. So I, I think that should be, should be brought up, that they're going to, they are going to bypass those 100% and go right to.
Well, it's no different when they bypassed on the County 4 with trucks, they're supposed to go to Highway 95, anybody locally, they didn't do that.
Yeah.
Can't control that.
No.
No, but, Mr. Chair, alls I ask is that they have better signage up on detours, better detour signage, Mark, so make sure that's addressed.
They're going to be a southbound detour also?
There is, well, yeah, so the, depends on which leg is being closed of that intersection of Trunk Highway 10 and 23, but there is a, you know, eastbound traffic turning from Highway 10 to east on 23, that'll be a closure of that leg or that intersection. So then, yeah, traffic would have to exit at Cassaw 3 at that interchange, and then head to the east to Cassaw 1, and then south to 23.
All right. Any other questions for Mark, or what are your wishes here?
Mr. Chair, I just feel it's not enough money for the wear and tear on our road.
And we've been down that road before, and they don't change their plans, so.
No, I agree. Just had to make that comment.
Looking for a motion, if you want to move it.
Mr. Chair, I'll approve MINDOT agreement 1052517 and authorize deposit of proceeds into the Road and Bridge Fund and approval attached resolution, an approved attached resolution.
I'll second that. Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Mark, engineer's update, please.
All right. Thank you. Just a few things today, snowplows were out at 4:00 AM to this morning. They're currently out on the road. Last week, I spent, in the previous week, spent some time to get our 35 bridge inspection reports entered in. They were conducted this last fall, I just needed to do the inspection reports. Shout out to Tony Henon, Morrison County engineer, for approving them on the program administrator side. For a bridge inspection report, needs to be conducted by a bridge team leader, which they have to be certified by, essentially through a Fed Highway class as well as MINDOT. So I've served as that, the bridge team leader for the last number of years. They do the, responsible for the, the bridge inspection report, and then it has to be signed up by the program administrator, which was Chris, the county engineer. With Chris's departure and trying to get everything done, was not able to get those inspection reports entered in in time, and so, yeah, shout out to Tony Henon for being the temporary program administrator for this year up in Morrison County. All right. I just want to figure out, share a little bit what a, what a bridge inspection report looks like. So this year, actually, we didn't have to perform all 30, 35 bridge inspections. We actually, I think it was less like 15, but the reason we completed those We actually, well, I think it was less like fifteen, but the reason we completed those additional, I wanted to actually complete more is because next year we're projecting eighty-six bridges. So you go from fifteen to eighty-six. Um, that's a lot, a significant work, uh, workload to be on one person. Uh, so I did complete an additional amount. We also got, uh, a number of our culverts, uh, done with a load rating to update that, so they could be, uh, potentially moved to a forty-eight month inspection frequency cycle. Um, but today I just figured I'd share with you, uh, just kinda what these reports look at like. Um, so these are entered into a program that MinDOT has. Um, they're done again by the program, uh, the team leader, um, which is me. So this is, uh, essentially our Cassa twenty-nine over the Mississippi River. This year it required a Snoopur inspection, what that is. Um, let's see if I can find you any pictures. Um, you can see this little arm that, it's a, it's a truck that sits on the bridge that has arm that you can come into, into a basket, and that arm brings you down so you can go up and close to take a look at, um, certain components of the bridge. So here you can kinda see me, that's just me from up on top of the basket, looking at these different components. Again, this, there's that arm that we're swinging underneath and inspecting pretty much anything that we see for defects, marking them out. Um, so there's some drape cracks on some of the bridge beams. Um, again, this is that Sartell Bridge, but, uh, you can kinda see a number of inspections. Uh, we mark sometimes the bridge beams so that the next time that, uh, inspectors are out there, they can inspect those specific areas as well as it helps for the pitchers. As you can imagine, our, that's a, that's I think eleven-span bridge, so there's a lot to put down in the bridge report and to note. Um, so, yeah, that one was, uh, was a fun one. Uh, it's quite a ways up there if you ever take a look from the top of the bridge down. Uh, so instead of going to Valley Fair this year, I, uh, got my ride on the Snoopur truck. But, uh, just a few things to note on the actual inspection side. This is the bridge inventory sheet. Tells you all the details of that bridge. A number of things I have to look at is the bridge signing to see if that's out there, what's out there, the safety features such as the bridge railing, the guard rail transition, approach guard rail, and the termini, if it meets requirements, if it's warranted. In this case, this bridge does not. It just needs the bridge railing, which meets safety standards, which were brought in the, uh, standards back in, I think it was two twenty-twenty, when we did, um, the repair work on that bridge. Um, and then a number of other things is, is these national bridge inventory ratings. Um, we have to rate the deck, the superstructure. Um, again, that's anything above the bearing, um, but not the deck. The substructure, which would be your pier caps, your piles, all that, the columns. We have to rate the channel. Uh, we have to rate the, uh, approach coming onto the bridge as well as the waterway adequacy of that bridge. Another other, a number of other things we have to do, perform is look at each individual element. So that's things like the reinforced concrete deck, and we have to put the quantity, square footage quantity in different condition states, one, two, three, four. The lower the, uh, condition state, the better it is, uh, the higher, the poorer it is. Um, so you can go through, you can see you got beams, we've got columns, we got pier walls, buttman's, footings, pier caps, joints, different types of joints, and different types of bearings. All of those have to be quantified, and everything has to be rated, and everything needs a description, so, um. So I just thought I'd kinda give you an idea of what's involved in that when you see, uh, again, uh, county staff or, uh, out there this fall, um, that's what we're performing. And every again, all those reports have to be written up, and they were due by last Wednesday, and we were successful to get them, uh, completed and, and approved in time, so.
Great, thank you. What's the year of that bridge, Mark?
This one? Let me look here. So this would be nineteen eighty, now is the wear surface eighty-three. I believe, yeah, everything was done in nineteen eighty. It was constructed in nineteen eighty-three, finished up in nineteen eighty-three.
Oh, Commissioner Pop.
So we, we spent a, a large portion of money in twenty-twenty on this bridge, and it already required an inspection.
Every bridge has a minimum of an inspection at frequency of twenty-four months, and you can actually see it up here. You can pull these all up online, go to MinDOT Bridge and look for inspections. You can find, uh, you won't find the in-depth one like this where it has all the pitchers, but you can find these different. But yeah, so this does require, every bridge, actual bridge, um, not non-culvert, I should say, I guess, uh, requires a minimum of inspection every, once every twenty-four months. Um, if the bridge condition is poorer, such as, uh, well, in your district, Commissioner Pop, uh, Cassat Twelve, just northeast of Rice, or Commissioner, um, uh, Johnson's, County Road fifty-eight, close to six. Those, because the condition, the NBI ratings, the National Bridge Inventory Ratings, are so low, they require actually a bridge inspection every year. Sometimes if it's poor enough and bad enough, it may require an, uh, inspection for every six months. A culvert is eligible up to forty-eight months, but there's a lot of criteria it has to meet. And we found out some of our load ratings of some of our culverts, uh, were the reason, the only reason why they were in a twenty-four month frequency, so we got MinDOT to add on to their statewide contract. There's some number of those, and a number of them were changed, uh, that they did load rate them higher this time. So now we're able to request a forty-eight month bridge frequency and cycle, and that's key cause, again, that's more staff time, um, if we have it on a closer interval. I mean, when it's required, it's required, you know, we wanna, we wanna obviously ensure the safety of the traveling public. Um, but with like culverts, uh, that's kinda the reason I think why they, they allow it for certain criteria, forty-eight month bridge, uh, inspection, frequency.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anything else?
Yeah, and then to come in the future on the bridges, just was gonna note that, um, while we're working on a resolution uh, regarding bridges, uh, here's, uh, something I just wanted to bring your attention is, uh, BRIM, uh, there's a, it's Bridge Replacement and Inventory Management. So there's talk now with a legislator, uh, right now in the House of approving, uh, bonding, the bonding bill, and that's where we've got a lot, a few of our bridges in the last few years, County Road fifty-one, south of Foley, County Road eighty, uh, just east of Sock Rapids, County Road, uh, fifty-one and fifty, and sixty-seven. So a couple of bridges, they were, they were through the bonding bill funded. And so that's now passing one of the committees and being sent to the other House committee, and then Senate, uh, committee today is, is looking at that. Um, but what they look for is a LPI rating of a, of, of a sixty or below. And so here's our most current, um, inventory of bridges and where they fit for LPI. LPI stands for Local Planning Index. So you can see we have now a number of bridges that are eligible for it. The ones in green, we already have funding committed for. Um, the ones in red, we do not. Um, the top one in that L zero zero seven two is one that, uh, was submitted to State Aid on behalf of, uh, Township in Maywood, but was rejected. Um, a few other red ones, two of them I'm actually waiting back. They've been asking, I've submitted for, uh, federal money for those. I'm still waiting to hear back. Five, zero five five zero seven and zero five five zero eight. I'm hopeful that maybe we will get some federal money on those. Um, so, but I, what I would need to do at one of these next board meetings is bring another updated, uh, resolution, uh, priority for, of replacing these bridges.
Mark, do you know if the one, the top one in Maywood, has Maywood Township reapplied? I know that.
They've given me a letter now, and I need to try to send it to be reapplied to the new district state aid.
So they chose that instead of going and asking for, uh, money to, uh, close that bridge and put it.
I believe the township's desire that they wanna replace. Um, my understanding is that, I mean, when it was denied the first time by S- uh, State Aid, uh, for using a township bridge allotment, was that, yeah, they could apply to take out the bridge and then put a cul-de-sac, and that would be funded by, um, through the, through, you know, the, the bonding bill, I guess.
Right, and the state would like that because it would come, it'd come off their inventory.
Yeah, there's a lot of bridges out there, um, and obviously with the bridge bonding, they're not able to fund, uh, the replacement of all those bridges.
Mm-hmm.
So they're trying to, I think, I think the idea is to make best use of the funds that are, are available.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Questions for Mark?
Yes, Mark, anything on the H sub grant yet?
Yeah, that's on my.
Just gonna ask that.
That's on my list. Uh, I have not heard anything back. I have sent a, uh, email last week asking about it. I have not heard back. I know they had said originally when we, they, they claimed a receipt of the application. They said the first week of February, tentatively. So we are still waiting on that. Um, I, I'm not sure how the policy board went with seven W, but, uh, um, I know the TAC recommended two million dollars to go through Cassa Two reconstruction.
Since we're talking about that, if that's okay, that was part of my commissioner meeting update, but I'll do it now.
Do it now.
Talking about it. So Policy Committee did approve, uh, Cassa Two, reconstruct Benton, uh, from US ten to, to one. The dollars that came in, uh, were two million instead of the requested two point three. Um, and also was approved for the, um, Rice pedestrian crossing. That, that's, those total dollars were. Let me pull the paperwork up here. There's a lot of paperwork. I wanna say it was a hundred and forty-eight thousand. That sound about right?
That sounds right.
And I believe, if you remember from our Committee of the Hole with Human Services, we, uh, said to get that moved ahead to twenty-five if at all possible. I think both these projects were slated for twenty-seven.
Cor- correct, yeah. So the, the, the pedestrian crossing, that's, uh, the TA, um, Transportation Alternatives. So the, the Policy Board, I think my understanding is recommends, uh, ranking.
Yep.
Projects, and I believe that one was ranked number one.
It was ranked number one, yeah.
And then now that actually goes to, I think, uh, the ATP three, and they take from all the different regions, and they make the selection beyond that. But I, you know, with Policy Board, say, seven W, the Cassa Two reconstruction, that, that ends pretty much with the seven W Policy Board.
Yep, and that one was ranked, that particular project, uh, was ranked third. So the, the Rice, the, uh, pedestrian one though was ranked first, and I do have the numbers here now. The local match was forty-eight, nine, thirty-two.
Okay.
So.
And if I remember right, I think on the ATP three, that, uh, the, the Rice project was ranked very highly in that area too. So I think that'll pass the ATP three.
Okay. Yeah, I know, and it was brought up at the TAC, you know, again, of maybe doing it sooner, and that's a possibility cause there is funds available in twenty-twenty. This is due to the, um, the IIG Bay Bill. There's additional money. So there's, uh, funds, I think, available in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and twenty-twenty-seven as a result of that. So hopefully, uh, maybe they'll look at that, and, cause I know that's what MinDOT is planning on, and BNSF is planning on replacing that rail crossing in Rice.
Right, and I just, I just wanted to highlight that we did have consensus that we would have those funds available. So if they need to move them forward in twenty-five, they could do that.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anything else?
Uh, just a couple of things here. Uh, I, I got the audit results from the MS four. Uh, I believe it was talked at a community the whole while back, back in August. We had an audit from the MPCA Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, uh, our, of our permit that we're required to have with them. Um, actually, the audit, I think we, we kinda understood that there'd be some training of staff that we would have to conduct. Uh, this is the formal reply. There was a lot of correspondence back and forth on a lot of the other, what they call minimum control measures. Uh, but, uh, a lot of the other ones that we were going back and forth, it, it appears that they have accepted, uh, as, as compliant on those. We do have to, uh, bring training to all staff. That includes public works, that includes the Sheriff's Department. They also mentioned, uh, parks, but I believe all our parks are outside the MS four area, so I don't think we'd have to do staff training. Um, so there's a lot of training that we're gonna have to conduct, I guess, with the next thirty days, and when I probably ask for an extension if possible. Um, so that's kinda the results of that. It's kinda been a lengthy process, um, with that audit. And, um, yeah, the last, last thing I'll bring up is, uh, I did, uh, report, this is an annual report that's required every year through Bowser, the Board of Water, uh, uh, and Soil. Anyways, of reporting all our actions that happen on county ditches, as well as the miles of those ditches, um, that, you know, as a result, those actions would put those buffer strips, uh, into and pretty much required to be inspected, as well as the number of inspections conducted. So that has been submitted to, to them.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
That will do it.
Members, any questions for Mark, while he's here? All right, thank you, Mark. All right, we're gonna move into Commissioner meeting updates, and maybe if I could request that we move through those fairly quickly since we do have ditch authority behind this meeting. Um, anyone like to volunteer to start?
I could start.
Okay, Commissioner Kapinski.
Considering I left my calendar at home with my notes, I only had a couple of meetings. Uh, we had our, um, uh, Township Meeting the other night. Uh, I think, uh, Brian stole the show on his report. Uh, other than that, uh, we've had a couple broadband meetings, and we've seen the outcome of those. So that'll be it for me.
Great, thank you.
Um, we just had, only one that we really need to report on is the Extension Committee. Um, we had a full, full, um, committee except for Commissioner District Three that's not filled yet. Um, I guess we heard a lot of great things that are, that are happening. Um, you know, a couple of the, the three extension people that are hired by the U were not there. Um, and I think there's gonna be some communications that at least they, they can't be to all four counties, as that, you know, that's four times, four times a year. That's probably asking a lot that they beat all the extension committees, but all along I thought it was really good, uh. I don't know. You got anything else to add?
No, there, I think the answer to that was they're gonna try to get two of them to our meeting on a rotating basis.
Two each meeting, yeah. Um, I think, uh, the Regional Director was a little upset that they didn't make a little bigger effort to show up.
I think that'll be corrected going forward.
Right. That's all that I really have. Everything else was attended by the rest of the commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Heinon.
So we, of course, m- most of us were at the drainage conference, very good conference. Uh, Career Solutions had the annual meeting. They had four individuals that testified, uh, testimonial of how they went through the process with them, union negotiations, township meetings, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schlungen?
Um, I was at the Minion Township, um, meeting, and they had, um, yes, era energy with the soldier, solar project there to talk about the project progress. That was pretty interesting.
Is that the same one that, uh, proposed in front of us at the board?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Tri-CAF, they were talking about their board size. Um, I think they're looking at fifteen to eighteen, so we'd have room for one more person on that board from Benton County.
In addition to yourself and Brent?
Um, Brent, they, well, we have Carla, Jeff, and Eunice for, um, consumers and community, but then we could have Brent on there too.
Yeah, he's already been assigned to it.
Yeah, he's already been appointed.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't written on the list, so I, he mentioned to me we're having somebody from Human Services that's gonna be on there. So that would work out good if we go, went to the eighteen. Um. They're increasing their routes for, um, transportation and rides. They now have twenty-three routes, and they're expanding into Morrison and, um, Western Stearns. Yeah, those are the biggest things there. I went to the, um, Greater St. Cloud Development Organization Annual Meeting. And. That, there's still jobs that we need to get to, get people working there, increasing the number of businesses. So it's still growing. And I think that was.
Okay, thank you. Um, for myself, uh, of course, we just talked about the Region Seven W Policy Committee and the results from that. Um, I too attended the drainage meeting up in Alex. I thought it was a very good meeting. The first part on the history was very educating, uh, so that was a really good, um, conference to be at. Commissioner Pop talked about our Extension Committee meeting. I also attended virtually our Highway twenty-three Coalition Board Meeting. Again, as a reminder, their annual meeting's coming up in April, and Transportation Day, March first down at the Capitol. Um, of course, the spring township meetings, I, I was a little disappointed. The, uh, attendance was way down, probably the lowest I've seen, but it is what it is. The people that were there had good questions and comments, so that was good. Um, that's all I had also. Monty, Committee of the Holes.
We have none to add.
Wow.
Wow.
Nice.
Motion to.
I'm gonna leave my calendar.
I can tell you're disappointed.
All right. Very disappointed. All right, with that, we're gonna adjourn at ten twenty-six.